Right. Yeah. We're going to call to order the Monday, August 25th, meeting of the Ellisville Town Council. Chief, if you'll start with a prayer.
Our heavenly Father, once again, we come before you this evening, and we thank you for the minute blessing you still in this little town. We ask you with this tonight to make decisions that affect people that live here, or if you're good, to say you say amen.
Chief.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it is made, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noel, roll call when you're ready, please.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Dan Swaffer. William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Action to pay, I'm sorry, action to approve minutes from the August 11th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payable vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? There are two resolutions this evening, the first of which is Resolution 24-2025, the fiscal plan for Blackwell Contractors, Inc., annexation.
You have two annexations on, both annexation ordinances on the GNS, not Blackwell Contractors and Value Built Construction, both of which came before the Plan Commission at its August meeting, and both of which passed by unanimous vote to send it to the town council urging approval of the annexations. But in any event, as you're aware, fiscal plans have to be passed for each of those annexations. And the first one is Blackwell Contractors, so this is 1.003 acres. It will be general business zoning, and the fiscal plan should be part of your packet. And it's going to be in Ward, Ward 4. So there's no estimated, the estimated tax rate would increase from .5673 to .5645 in the year 2025-26. There's no outstanding debt tied to the income.
Questions from council?
Yeah, it looks like it's going from, I just want to make sure I'm seeing this right. It's going from residential to general business, right?
It's going, it was in Monroe County, so community development residential, yes. It's going from CD to general business C2.
Okay. Further questions from council? Town manager, new question?
Recommended support me annex this property.
Anything from the public? No one rising in chambers, no one online, back to council.
Make a move to approve Resolution 20, or 20, Resolution 24-2025, fiscal plan for Blackwell Contractors, Inc., annexation.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next resolution to see today is Resolution 25-2025, fiscal plan for Value Built Construction, LLC, annexation.
Again, this passed, the annexation passed the Plan Commission by unanimous vote. This is a request by Ernest Shi from Value Built Construction to voluntarily annex a parcel, looks like two parcels on the GIS, but it's approximately 3.33 acres of land. It's located at 4599 North Thomas Road, and it is going to, again, be zoned residential R1 if the council approves that zoning, and that's the recommended zoning from the Plan Commission. There will be no outstanding Monroe County debt tied to the income taxes, and the estimated tax rate in terms of effect on taxpayers in Ellisville will increase from .5673 to .5645 in 2025-2026.
That should be decreased, shouldn't it?
Yes, probably, yeah. Yes, I'm sorry. And the estimated change in tax levy per taxpayer will be minimal.
Any questions from council?
I'd just like to make a comment to the general public, when they always think, well, you're growing, you're gonna, we're gonna have more taxes because of that, just for this small parcel. It's not much, I mean negligible, $11 per year for a $200,000 home, but if you do this multiple times over the course of the year, people see tax savings. So when I say that growing actually can help save, you know, you on your tax dollars, those people that are anti-growth, well, if you, and want their taxes lower, those two things are, they don't go together. I mean, you actually have to grow to lower your taxes. And this just shows it there.
Comments from town manager, supervisors?
Support this annexation.
Anything from the public? Seeing no one rise in chambers, no one online, we're back to the council.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 25-2025, the fiscal plan for Value Built Construction, LLC, annexation.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
This evening, there are no ordinances on first reading, there are however, three on second, the first of which is ordinance 25-18, imposing a wheel tax and motor vehicle license excise tax.
And Scott, this is a public hearing on this.
Yes.
This was introduced at the previous town council meeting, and I was asked to prepare a wheel tax and municipal surtax ordinance. If the council approves this, the wheel tax fund will be $5 per vehicle, the excise surtax will be $15 per vehicle, the wheel tax is generally for commercial vehicles, the municipal surtax will be for passenger vehicles. What you have before you is an amended version of the ordinance, and the reason I amended it is because your clerk treasurer has to upload certain documents to the BMV portal on the Gateway website, and there are certain forms that the Bureau Motor Vehicles wants to see, and in the excise wheel tax rate designation form prepared by the BMV, it had a couple of categories, extra categories, that are not included in 63.5-11 or 63.5-10. Specifically, on the BMV form, they include for hire buses, not-for-hire buses, and they also include semi-tractors. There's no definition of not-for-hire bus or semi-tractors under 63.5-11 or 63.5-10. However, I don't want to argue with the BMV.
Right.
So, I figured it doesn't hurt to include it, and I was hard pressed to even think of a not-for-hire bus, because if it's a not-for-hire bus, it's probably going to come under one of those exceptions. Under subsection D, it's going to be a church bus, a school bus or something, but in any event, it's what the BMV included on their spreadsheet, so on page two of the ordinance, under 33.93 Wheel Tax and Fund, I amended buses to put a parenthetical in there that says includes for hire and not-for-hire. Under semi-trailers, I put parenthetical language that says includes farm semi-trailers, and I added a category for semi-tractors. Parenthetical includes tractors used in combination with a semi-trailer, so you should be covered no matter what.
Okay.
I did not change the amounts.
All right.
To be charged per vehicle.
Questions, comments from council?
Darla, for the recreational vehicle portion of it, do we know, just off the top of my head, are we, is that going to be like RVs, UTVs, ATVs, all three of those?
Certainly RVs, in all honesty, Scott, I don't know about ATVs, but RVs for sure.
Okay. I ask because there's a lot of dialogue happening right now at the county level about opening up county roads to UTV usage, and that may certainly be a fact for us.
I would just say this is not something I traditionally would support, but I have, over the last couple of years, we've seen the road funds shrink and shrink, I mean, cigarette tax used to pay for a lot of that, luckily, less people are smoking now. And to be clear, I think I mentioned at the last one, the wheel, this wheel tax is necessary to be, for us to get grants from a larger fund, so if you see those roads being paved on Sales Street, if you see in the neighborhoods roads being paved, just work being done, it's because we've gotten those grants. Where does that grant come from? Tax money that you've already paid to the state. So if we don't pass this, basically, we're saying the tax money you're paying and gas, the gas tax, and other taxes that go towards the community crossing grants, we're not going to be responsible in getting back to Ellisville. I thought of any other, I've been racking my brain to think of other ways other than passing this tax, and if people do not want to pay the tax, I deeply ask them, give me an alternative. I'm begging for an alternative to this, but it has to be a yearly thing that covers the cost of all the money we'd be losing, which would be about KIP, about what percentage of your road, if we don't get any community crossing grants, what would that do to your road fund?
Well, they'd probably cut it by two-thirds.
Okay.
Because I only pay one for, three-quarters, because I only pay one quarter for every one of these streets out there. The town that pays a quarter of that grant, pave that street.
And then last year, the matching fund portion was 250,000, I thought, if I remember right? Yeah.
I mean, over the years, and I don't remember, you kind of, you took that paper together, but since 2016, it was over a million, some of it the town has gotten from the state.
And in the future, we're not talking about a little money, we're talking about millions of dollars.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And Noel, I think you were mentioning to me earlier, we're not the only ones going through this to pass a wheel tax due to SB, I don't think it's SB 1, but one of the other bills passed that ties it to grants, aren't there other communities? Quite a few.
Correct, there's 12 right now that are in the process to get before the September 1st deadline.
Because others already have it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not counting the ones that already currently have it, and that's well over 20.
And I do, I hate this stacks onto the county wheel tax, but the original legislation said it would not stack, and at the last minute, they pulled that out and said, you got to pay both, so, but we have to protect for our residents, our roads, and our critical services for our town. That's all.
Anything else? Town manager?
I'm good.
Bassett.
Okay. This is the public hearing, so anyone from the public wishing to speak concerning this tax, or actually this ordinance? Seeing no one rise in chambers, no one online, we're back to the council.
I'll make a motion.
One question, I have one question.
Who would you? Who's?
Mr. Perry.
Okay.
I'm online.
How did he get on you?
We did not see your hand raised, Mr. Perry. Go ahead.
I'm not quite sure how I do that.
Yeah, there's a function on there, but go ahead, you have three minutes.
Could somebody address the issue of sort of the net, the net revenues from this new initiative? Because there's, there's an administrative cost, I presume, and I'm not quite sure how it's administered.
The revenues are estimated at $89,000.
Could you say that again, Michael?
I said, if we implement the tax throughout a year, we would receive approximately $89,000. And it's to be...
Does that include the administrative cost?
No, it doesn't.
Is there an administrative cost we have to pay as a town?
Well, I mean, the administrative cost is going to be on the BMV largely, because they have to collect it, and once they collect it, they have 21 days to get it to the town, and then Noel has to keep track of it, so that's an internal administrative cost, and then obviously, when the town wants to use the money, the town has to do an appropriation. So, I mean, there's some administrative costs, but just like you have with every other fund, right, you won't need any outside contractors or anybody to help you calculate this, so.
I would, I'm wondering, you said this is a result of administrative or legislative decisions in the last legislative session?
It is.
Yeah, I'm wondering maybe whether somebody ought to go back to the legislature and say that it's penny wise and pound foolish to sort of institute another tax.
We nominate you.
Ultimately, well, it also has a cost to it that somebody's paying.
Well, I, I, I interrupted you, I'm sorry for that, but we, we could nominate you to go up there and talk to them, but two things, the wheel tax that we...
They'd have me to do that.
Okay, great, we can give you some background. So, but the wheel tax that we are implementing is at its lowest form, so we, we did, there's, we could have went a lot higher on a wheel tax, and the board wanted to go with the lowest numbers we could, so we're, did the tax because we have to, because we want to protect the community crossing grants, but we did impose a tax that was at its lowest limit.
And keep in mind, one thing about a wheel tax that actually is a benefit long-term is property taxes take three to four years to really, for us to really get the full property tax revenue from, from new assessments, but a wheel tax, as soon as people move into town, we're going to need those roads built, and guess what? They're paying for it. So existing, one of the things I hear time and time again from residents, we don't want to pay for new growth. Well, guess what? This is one way, you're not going to be paying for the new growth. Yes, it's a hit now, but long-term, it's putting us on a financial footing that you're not going to have to. Those new roads, they're paid by the new residents.
Okay, real quick, Mr. Perry, you have about a minute left, actually, time's expired, but we spent some time that wasn't yours talking amongst ourselves. Do you have any other comments?
If you'd, when I heard the timer go off.
Because I was watching it, because I was unclear how he was able to unmute himself. So, Mr. Perry, if you're still listening and you'd like to unmute, you have about another 30 seconds.
Yeah, that's, that's one argument I might make, is to sort of set the minimum higher, but, and that relates to Mike's, Michael's point, but I can also understand why you may want to keep it at a minimum.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, we are trying to keep it at a minimum, because we don't know what else is coming, so we're trying to wade in a little bit of time. Anyone else having questions or comments, actually comments? Again, seeing no one, we're going to go back to council.
I'll move to approve ordinance 2025-18, imposing a wheel tax and motor vehicle license excise tax.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next ordinance this evening is reflecting what we did earlier under another resolution, actually, the next two are. This is Resolution 2025-19, the voluntary annexation of 3750 West State Road 46, Bloomington, Indiana, 47404.
That's me. At the August 7th Plan Commission meeting, the petitioner, Blackwell Contractors, received a unanimous favorable recommendation with a vote of six to zero to annex one parcel totaling approximately 1.003 acres of land located at 3750 West State Road 46. This is a super voluntary annexation and is 71% contiguous to town at Ellisville. Parcel is currently zoned CD, Community Development Residential by Monroe County, and the Plan Commission's recommendation includes a zoning designation of commercial two, general business upon annexation. Property will be located in Council Ward 4, and petitioner is present if you have any questions.
Questions, comments from council? Town manager?
I just recommend that we annex.
Anyone from the public? Seeing no one, back to council.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-19, the voluntary annexation of 3750 West State Road 46, Bloomington.
I'll second.
Motion second.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next ordinance this evening is ordinance 2025-20, voluntary annexation of two parcels, 4599 North Thomas Road, Bloomington, Indiana, 47401.
Also at its August 7th meeting, the Plan Commission, sorry, attending that meeting was petitioner with Value Built Construction, LLC. It received a unanimous favorable recommendation with a vote of six to zero to annex two parcels totaling approximately 3.33 acres of land located at 4599 North Thomas Road. This is a super voluntary annexation and is 38.7% contiguous to town at Ellisville. Parcels are currently zoned CD, Community Development Residential by Monroe County, and the Plan Commission's recommendation includes a zoning designation of residential one, single-family residential. The zoning of the neighboring parcels within the town at Ellisville are zoned residential one as well to the north and agricultural to the east. Property will be located in Council Ward 5.
Questions from council or comments? Town manager?
Anexation is a perfect fit, I recommend it.
From the public? Seeing none, back to council.
I'll move to approve ordinance 2025-20, voluntary annexation of two parcels, 4599 North Thomas Road, Bloomington, Indiana, 47404.
Second.
Motion second.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There is no old business on the agenda, new business on the agenda this evening is updating certification list for planning.
I'll take this one. So the federal government makes flood insurance available to the citizens of Ellisville. We have to follow certain guidelines and have ordinances that are tied to all this, and then now, the new, I think a new law is that we have to have a certified community floodplain administrator, and so Denise has become certified, and we want to add it to the list of certifications that will allow for $250, and I just recommend that we do this so we can get her the money and make sure it's on the list for planning.
Questions from council?
So all these, the five certificates, is it's a maximum of how much per year? Or can they get $250 for each of these things?
Yeah, go ahead.
$250 for each of the ones in these departments.
The council has traditionally approved the police and fire, and that's why I don't list them all on the salary ordinance, because there's several for each department.
So the clerk treasurer department with all the certifications, and the planning can get an extra $1,250 a year with these certifications, then?
No, so the clerk treasurer would get...
If you got all of them.
I mean, no, because under the clerk treasurer's department, there's only one, two, three, four, five.
Five times two fifty is 1,250, correct?
Correct.
So, so, yes.
Okay. Sorry, I heard, I heard 12,000 for some reason in my brain. Yeah, there's, it's highly unlikely, Sandy didn't even have every one of these, she only had, you, so like, the CMC and the MMC, you don't carry those at the same time, because the CMC is first, so now that I'm thinking about it, no, you cannot carry. So the most you could have would be 500. The most would be $750, which is currently what Amber has.
Okay, what about planning? Do any of those stack like that?
I cannot say with, for my knowledge of the planning, I do not know.
I think she only has two certifications to get paid for them, right?
Yeah.
Because you're a certified grant administrator, correct?
Yes, the ERC shouldn't really be on that, that's just one afternoon of listening to them, so that shouldn't be on there, that should come off, but, no, I can't, I can only see probably having three at one time. I think somebody else in my office should be the certified ADA coordinator.
And KIP for yours, is Master Road Scholar, does that replace Road Scholar? Or those two separate certifications?
Those are two separate.
Okay.
And right now, it's just Jay and myself that has them too right now.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Questions? And this is internal, so motions.
Make a motion to approve the updated certification list for planning.
Do we want to strike number three, Denise's suggestion?
We can, certainly.
Yeah. As amended.
Okay. I'll second.
Motion second, please.
May I get the name of the certification for the minutes?
Employee in responsible charge, ERC?
The one that we're adding.
Oh, that we're adding.
I do not know the name of it.
I'm not sure which one we're adding.
Certified floodplain manager.
Floodplain, wasn't it?
Okay.
The certified floodplain manager has been on there. I did not know what to call the updated one, so I initially sent this to Darla, because I wasn't sure how to add it for the council to approve. These are the current ones that the council has already approved.
Okay, so then what are we asking?
To add another certification that's different, and I just don't know what the name of that is. That would be Denise, because you received the certification, what's the name of the certification?
It just says certified floodplain manager on the certificate, I believe.
It's recent legislation that requires training for each community's floodplain administrator.
But that, I guess, it's already on there.
So, will the floodplain, certified floodplain manager, from the notes that I have in there, is a two-year certified course? So when I looked it up, it wasn't the same as the certificate that you gave me, so I wasn't, it was a class in that certification, so I was unclear.
Mine just read administrator, so I guess I got the title wrong.
So one's a two-year course, what's the difference in the one that you did?
This one was mandated by FEMA slash DNR. We had to have it done by June 30th, and if we didn't have a certified floodplain manager, the community couldn't get any floodplain insurance.
I guess I'm saying the difference in getting certified for it, what's the, I mean, did you have to go to classes, was it something online?
I could have gone to Emmitsburg, Maryland for, I think, a week or two weeks, I remember, but I chose to do the online.
I guess I'm confused, because it sounds like this was already on there.
But this, it's a different one, I guess, or is it? Darla?
I don't know, in all honesty. So I think it's probably not a bad idea if you're going to have these certifications to have a resolution or something, just where you have a paper trail of what you're voting on, so if you are inclined, you could table this, and I'll get with Denise and Noel, and we'll figure out actually what the correct title is, and that it can come back before you.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll amend my motion, I'm going to table the updating the certifications list for planning.
I'll second.
Motion second to table.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Motion table.
Next, this privilege of the floor, anyone having business with the council that has not been part of our normal agenda this evening. Seeing no one online or in chambers, we'll move to supervisor comments, beginning with the town manager.
Sure, just want to thank the department heads for hanging in there during the budget process. It was a pretty grim task this year, and I especially want to thank Noel and Amber, they worked their tails off on this, I mean, it's back and forth, trying to catch up with all the rules, and trying to make sure that we cover our rear ends as we move forward and don't make a mistake, and so I really thank, thank everyone, Noel, Amber, I really thank you. Is Amber still there? Yes, she's not. And then also, the town is always in flux, there's always annexations going on, resolutions, ordinances, there are always deadlines, sometimes we wait too long, sometimes we just pile it on, and I'm pretty sure I heard Darla blow a whistle and say 15 yards piling on, but amongst, or in between all that, she always gets the work done, and we just look like we're really, really good, and it's really, a lot has to do with how Darla gets this all straightened out and puts all this together all the time, so thank you, Darla.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Chief? Chief? Or lucky you. Need to discuss funding options for the roof repair. The amount that was awarded was 116,589, and we need to decide whether we want to finance it or pull it out of existing funds. Do you want to address this?
Because from, I want to make it clear, the financing paperwork, if the public sees it's going to look like we're paying $8,500 in finance fees, but that's not the plan, correct?
Correct.
Your plan is, is...
That's if it goes the full three years.
Right, but we're not planning to go the full three years.
Correct.
We just need some wiggle room where we're not depleting our reserve funds, and as anyone watching a budget session knows, those are under pressure. Do we have any paperwork on this? Because it wasn't on the agenda.
That's correct, because we're not sure whether we need to do additional appropriations for a CBNE line, or whether we need permission to do the funding paperwork through the finance committee.
I will tell you, I, after hearing that it's going to be paid, and the impact will only be about $1,500 worth of interest, I agree with Scott, who's, so, has said that we should not probably put those pressures on those funds, and so financing it, yes.
Any disagreement? Charlie, do you want to vote on that?
I think it wouldn't hurt, just so we have a record.
Is there a motion?
In the minutes.
I'll make a motion to finance the 116,000, what was the total amount? 115,589.15 to finance that through...
People State Bank.
People State Bank.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call when you're ready, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Kip?
I have nothing.
I was just going to add that I will get with the chief and People State Bank, and hopefully, we should be able to get that ready for the next meeting if Darla agrees with that.
Now we're down to council comments. Anything?
I've already talked myself to death today, so...
Okay, I have nothing either. Seeing that, we have no further business, motion's adjourned. Sorry, the meeting's adjourned.
Yes.